All right.
Do we do a pledge of allegiance?
Yes. Let's do the pledge.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on our agenda is public comment. Do we have anyone here joining us for public comment tonight? No, didn't think so. Okay. We will move on to approval of the minutes. We have the minutes in our packet. Did everyone get a chance to take a look?
Madam Chair, motion approval of the September 27th open session minutes as written.
Seconded.
On favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the introduction of a new staff member. Very excited.
Yes, we dropped here. Megan will be our new deputy town manager effective November 5th. Megan's coming from the town of Wells. I believe she served in a similar role for many years. And very, very excited, Megan, through, came through with a, there's a really solid pool of candidates that applied for the position. It's pretty evident early on that Megan had the, I don't know the qualifications, but the personality and the style and the approach. I'm really looking forward with partnering with Megan. I see her as a partner moving forward. I think we'll be a much stronger organization because of her background and personality and style and excited to introduce Megan.
All right, great. Thank you for joining us tonight. So happy to have you join the team.
Thank you. I'm thrilled to be joining North Andover. I'm really excited to be working with Andrew and, you know, all the staff that I've met to date. I've just really been completely blown away with everything that everyone's doing and, you know, I'm really excited to be joining.
Any other questions?
So nice to meet you.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
See you easy lift. This is a good group.
All right. We already had the chance to pepper her with our questions, I guess, so. Okay, moving on to governmental report, and I think Andrew's going to give us an update on Columbia Gas.
I will. So we can open this. So as we did at last meeting, I thought I would try to give you an update. At this particular meeting, and do the same for the next couple of meetings, as we move through hopefully what is the balance of the recovery phase, excuse me, the restoration phase of the gas overpressurization that took place on September 13th. The goal with this slide presentation, and I'll move it through fairly quickly and certainly reserve time for questions, is to provide you a sample of the kinds of information and the kinds of slides that are being pushed out by Columbia Gas, and we're putting on our website and different news feeds, so that residents, if they're looking at those, and we're getting a lot of feedback, residents are looking at that information, which we think is great, but as sort of explained some of these slides, because there's a lot of information. I mean, every day, we're posting a daily briefing and we're putting it out to our residents, and that information obviously has stories behind it and context. I thought it would be helpful to put out a sort of a series of slides that have been put out by Columbia Gas in the last week or so to give you a sense of what that information looks like, so residents can know what to do. We believe internally this is the most important slide and has been for some time. It's in essence a checklist, that residents need to know that you need to be gas-ready and house-ready before you relit. So three phases: gas-ready, house-ready, and then you need to be relit. If you're gas-ready early on in the process and not house-ready, it doesn't make any difference. If you're house-ready early in the process, but the gas line hasn't been replaced, it's not going to make any difference. You have to get through both of those phases before the relight process begins, and this is a common slide we put on our own information that goes out to the public, and certainly information that gets provided on almost every slide presentation we put out. So I'd suggest to residents, they print this slide off, they put it on their fridge, they check a box as certain things are being completed, and they know when the five boxes are checked, then they're good to go. Okay? Again, these are slices of daily briefings. Every day, members of my staff and myself spend about an hour on the phone with people involved in this restoration process. We ask questions, we look at this information. As soon as we receive these briefings, which is typically about an hour or less before the actual briefing takes place, we push this out to the community. Every resident through our webpage, news feeds, Twitter, and those kind of things. Get this, I made a little note on this, that this is a partial slide deck, so this is an example of what was put out on October 7th. It's not every slide that we put out to the public in our daily briefings folder, it's just a sample of those slides, so we can talk about them. So every day, the first thing we do is we look at the weather. We take a 10-day snapshot of what the weather looks like, because it helps us, it helps inform us as to not only what that may impact maybe on construction, but also on the residents and the likelihood we're going to need to find alternative housing. Every day, we look at when it, when the sun rises and the sun sets, all part of the information that we need moving forward. This slide gives you a sense of the breadth of folks working on the restoration project. If you add up these components here, you're looking at over 1,000 employees from multiple different states. If you can see this sort of, try to blow this up a little more in terms of size, but I think you can see up the top of this graph, let's see if we can make this just slightly larger, because I don't have it in the PowerPoint format, okay? All of this represents up top here, all of the various states that the staff is coming from, all these different colors, and you see that in the bar charts and so forth, but there's a significant amount of people. The amount of employees deployed represents over 1,000 throughout the community in different roles: claims processes, construction processes, assessments, and so forth. And you can imagine what it takes to sort of navigate that. So originally, when this project began, in terms of the restoration phase, there was two components, what was called assessment and install, and the idea is you were going to get two customer touches. Someone would come in with a group of staff, plumber, electrician, and so forth, and they would go in and assess the home as to the needs, the requirements in each and every house. After that, probably a couple of weeks later, in would come the install group. They would remove the appliances that were indicated as not, no longer functioning, they would replace those, they'd make sure there was an inspector involved to make sure the house could be returned and ready to go. Those processes, beginning this week, have been combined, because again, as an evaluation of what's going on and sitting in these meetings, the feeling was having to visit a house twice didn't make a lot of sense, bringing the same resources in twice didn't make a lot of sense, and if we were trying to get, we were trying to get the best utilization of the people ultimately had to inspect the work, because remember, almost all this work has to be inspected, having them go in with these assessment install teams made sense. So at the completion of the process, the house was truly ready. It should be noted, and I think it's on a slide later on, that when the house is house-ready, attached to the meter will be a green tag that basically indicates that the house is ready, meaning inside the house. When the gas line and service line are replaced, the meter will have a yellow tag attached to it, and in the end, no house will be relit until there's a yellow tag and a green tag. That allows the people working on these different projects to be aware of what's gone on to date. So this assessment, this is one look from a couple of days ago, again, all this information evolves from day to day, but at this particular October 7th report, this gives you a sense of the commitments to the assessment phase. There was 60 electricians, 24 linguists in case of bilingual residents, and 30 assessors of people evaluating the homes. In the essence, in this particular days, there had been 178 homes assessed, a total of 3,364 since the beginning of the assessments, with a goal of approximately 10,000. So although the meter count could be less, behind every meter could be two units. So in North Andover, as an example, we have 1,517 meters impacted. We believe that that accumulates to some number of close to 2,000 dwelling units. It's just substantial, right? So this is this install state, phase, and what you'll see on this slide again will ultimately be combined in future briefings, that the assessment and install will be combined together to create efficiency. You can see this really high number on the top line to plumbers, over 500 plumbers on the 6th, 7th, and 8th. What we're finding is that they regularly have a couple of hundred plumbers on a daily basis, but on the weekends, as the plumbers finish their more traditional scheduled work, we're getting large, a number of plumbers to come in over the weekends. This happens to be a holiday weekend, so for three days, we got a large number influx of plumbers to help through the process. Electricians, that number is more steady, it's regularly around these numbers, it doesn't fluctuate as much, and they've determined against through this process that it's best sometimes to have some gas fitters. Gas fitters can do some of the work that plumbers can, but gas fitters cannot do other parts of the work that plumbers can. So a plumber can do gas work and plumbing work, gas fitters can do some of the gas work, and we're finding by hiring gas fitters, it, combined with the plumbers, it's a more efficient approach to committing the resources. GRS in this slide off to the left stands for Gilbane, I believe it's Recovery Services. Gilbane is a major construction company nationally. They were involved in the Hurricane Sandy response. They've been engaged for the purpose of coordinating these activities, the purchase of all of the appliances that are required. All of that is now being handled by staff who has experience in large-scale recovery operations and other similar disasters. So these give you some sense of how to look at this slide, how many units were done in a day, what's the cumulative, what's the goal, okay? This gives you some sense of the inventory in the lower part of the slide. To date, they've installed 135 water heaters, they have 550 in stock, there's a warehouse facility, someone manages that from a logistics perspective, purchasing the quantities of what they need, making sure those are in, so that when these units are necessary, there's a place to go pick up those units and get them installed. This gives you a some sense of the magnitude. There's 850 water heaters on order, 1,300 boilers on order, combination units, which are heating units, 1,000, tankless water heaters, another 200, ranges 1,500, dryers 1,500, and those numbers will increase over time.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So people are not allowed to pick up their own?
Is that what you're saying?
That's not accurate.
Okay.
So they will provide a-
That was a question.
Yes, it's a great question. So they have provided a, an appliance, which is what I would describe above the middle of the pack. I believe the one that I actually saw myself and was able to look at was a Whirlpool appliance. If that appliance is at, or something, is something you're comfortable with, because it's consistent with what you're used to, you can have them provide that appliance. If in your home, you had an appliance which was north of that, you decided that you were going to get, you know, the $15, $1800 stove, all good. That can still be replaced and can be done through a reimbursement process. If you work through this process to get that replaced, my feeling is it would take longer, right? And when we talk about an November 19th date, we're not talking about replacing that kind of specialty equipment, because they're not going to stock, you know, 1,000 of these other stoves, waiting to see if there's a matchup. So if you take the stock item, which again is not the low, low item off the Best Buy floor or Home Depot floor, it's north of that, but if you're comfortable with that, that'll get installed. If you have something different, you can replace that, as long as it's consistent with what you had, and you will be reimbursed for that. So if you have a higher level item, you can go ahead and do that. Same thing with the dryers.
You buy it yourself and you request reimbursement through the claims process?
I would recommend that that is a faster approach than waiting for this process to go order that specialty item. When I say specialty, I don't mean it can't be bought on the floor of a store, but it would be far more efficient for you to say, "This is the kind of stove I have today, I want to replace it in kind, it's price point north of what's being proposed, I'm going to do that and seek a reimbursement," then put it into this sort of logistical chain of trying to get that ordered through this process and back to your home.
Can I ask another question?
Yeah, sure.
A little, almost the same, but a little, sort of an offshoot. So say people don't have the financial means to buy the appliance.
Yes.
Do we, I, I have been speaking with a local bank about maybe having short-term loans for people.
Yep.
Has that been already, and I asked them also to reach out to you too, so you might have been approached if not.
I've spoken to the banks. The banks cannot offer a loan to any individual, that they can't offer it to every one of their customers. So they can't say people impacted by the disasters can get this interest-free loan without offering it to every customer. So for banks, the banking rules are complicated. They all want to help, by the way. We've had several banks reach out, they've been fantastic, they're doing some fundraising initiatives, because what they've determined is the banking rules provide restrictions that don't help customers. That being said, there are options, and options that have been provided, where if, if someone provides, for instance, as relates to electric water heater, you provide a receipt from a contractor, they will, they will pay for that, so you don't have to come out of pocket, either directly to-
An invoice.
Yeah, quote, an invoice, yep. They'll do that. They've done some cases where they've done cards, gift cards, some, people don't seem to be as comfortable with that, I don't sort of, I'm not surprised by that, but they'll give you a pre-filled gift card to a certain value. So there are ways for people who can't come out of pocket to cover those expenses. Again, if you have a common, and I'm trying to think of the right words, right, a commonly purchased stove, maybe it's Maytag, Maytag and OutWhirlpool, or maybe it's a Manor and OutWhirlpool, but it does the same things as what's there, then obviously, to me, there would be an advantage of taking their device, because it'll be installed.
Those 1,500 are all the same, so if they're Whirlpool, or if they're Frigidaire, or whatever, it's, they're all the same.
The ones I saw, yes.
It's not like they're coming to you and saying, "You have an option of this Whirlpool, this Maytag, and this-"
It's not a showroom.
Right, okay.
They have the same, they've done the same for the dryer. You know, some people buy these really nice front-end loaded dryers, is that what they're called? I'm sorry, I'm not as much on that. Right, front end-
And they're not cheap.
And they're not cheap?
I had one a month old.
And so when you do that, that's not what they're going to provide as the appliance of choice, they're going to provide a gas dryer that's of a good quality.
But that's again for the quickest vehicle, but these people can choose to go and get-
Yes, absolutely.
And they can go through the Columbia Gas process, the Columbia Gas-
Yes.
Corporation.
Yes. Now, what they, what I think they would struggle with is, today they have the top-loading gas driver, dryer, that's that sort of middle-of-the-road product, and they decide through this process they want to upgrade. I think you're going to struggle getting Columbia Gas to say, "I'm going to pay for the $1,000 dryer," when you have a $400 dryer.
So I, I don't want to jump ahead, we're talking about appliances.
Yep.
Did you have in the next section furnaces, or can we use this?
It's all part of the same. Well, this is a construction thing. So the slide I'm on really doesn't have to do with either, although we passed those, we can come back to that. So we can go, furnaces, go ahead.
So, so feedback that I got is that residents are still being asked to provide some upfront money in order to get their furnaces replaced. Is that accurate?
I would say that the furnaces seem to be the, quite the biggest struggle in terms of the narrative, and I think that continues to be the case, I think that's an honest answer. I would say that if it was determined as being damaged, Columbia Gas is going to replace that furnace with an in-kind furnace, boiler furnace depending on the term. One features hot water, one's air, right? If you can have them do it, it's probably best. If you replace that, if they determine through this assessment install phase, again, that you have a specific boiler in mind, but they've determined that that was damaged through this process, then they are going to reimburse, they, they tell us, they would rather have the homeowner do it, because it's one less they have to do. I think so, I just think that we're also finding that the claims process is a little slower than we'd like.
Am I misunderstanding, though, that aren't, isn't every furnace supposed to be getting replaced regardless?
I think residents will be given choices, some level of choice that way. If you go in and they say, "We don't see damage," and you say, "I'm good with what's there," some people will not want that disruption.
So for those, for the overwhelming majority of people, that probably would want to have something done with their furnace, rather than roll the dice, because I think that-
I think in cases, I think, I don't know what that percentage is, but I think that that's correct. If there's a case that your warranty is going to be impacted because you're keeping your current boiler, it can't be repaired because the parts aren't made anymore, there was specific damage to it, though, all of that is covered. You would have to be a situation where, for some reason, they were able to prove that there was no damage, no impact on warranty, no risk to the future, and I can tell you from an inspector's point of view, they're certainly going to be in the provision of leaning toward the fact that almost every boiler was impacted. It's my position that every boiler was impacted.
If you want a new furnace, because of your concerns, will you be getting a new furnace?
I believe you will, yes.
So, like, for instance, one resident, who I think we as a town have worked really closely with, was told that they would just order parts, they wouldn't replace her furnace completely because it was less than six years old.
Yeah, and I'm telling you that, so part of the thing I think you folks have been aware of is this, trying to clarify the message in the last couple of days. I can tell you as of last night, from the sort of back and forth, so my conversation with Columbia Gas on Thursday, sometime last week, they came in and said, "This is, this is where we're going." The message seemed to get a little blurry through those periods of time. As you understand, we're moving a giant ocean liner, and sometimes these conversations, reminds me a little bit of the conversation about paying for alternative energy sources, and at first, they weren't sure what they were going to do, and then were able to clarify they would fund the switch to electric water heater. This reminds me a little bit of that. Seemed to be crystal clear, got a little blurry in the meantime, and we continue to work at that to say that this doesn't make sense. We, we want the residents to know that this is the right course of action, and we got confirmation from Columbia Gas last night at sometime 7, 8, 9 o'clock, that they in fact are going to replace those. So if a resident has been told they're going to fix something, a resident's been told they're going to fix something on a boiler, that is not at all consistent with what Columbia Gas senior executives have told us.
What a situation like that.
If they're going to fix something, they're to say, "No, don't fix it," and call my office, and we'll feed it to the liaison, and we'll tell the liaison, if, if they're going to fix one thing on that boiler, then our impression is it comes out and the boiler replacement goes in.
Okay. And then, that's important.
Yep.
I'm using this for this, like, for me, I, I thought of all the contact I've had between our last live meeting and tonight, and a lot of, a lot of questions have been answered. It was funny, I went to the claims center on Sunday, and I was about to ask a question that I would have asked our town manager, but I was like, "You know what, it's a Sunday, I'll ask the claims center," and all of a sudden, out of the shadows, out popped our town manager incognito in it. But I really, I wanted to go through and look at all the questions.
Didn't work.
I didn't, well, you were in line for a new boiler. No, they just answered the question and-
Just a bed, a bed would be good.
But I, that's, I wanted to go back, and I even reached back out to that resident today, and that was still the, the line she was being fed, so it's good to know, and it's, I think a lot of people, I spoke across the street to the owners of First and Main, and I don't think a lot of people realize that the liaisons here at Town Hall, so if they have issues, to come on up to the town manager's office.
Well, yeah, I think, yeah, so what's important is to funnel those messages through us, so we can track them as well. It's not, the spot at Town Hall is not the place where residents come up and knock on the door. We're funneling those messages, so we can make sure there's a continuity back through the chain. We certainly know that people are getting the message, we're going to repair, not replace. It was part of the reason why myself and the fire chief made a message that that's not acceptable, and, and wanted to make it clear. I can tell you that the senior-level folks at Columbia Gas agreed and confirmed that last night, but we do know that sort of trickle-down message takes a while, we found that through the whole experience, right? They've got this call center, they've got people in the middle of Ohio answering phone calls, you know, I don't know what happens at the beginning of the work shift, but that message takes some time to funnel through. If someone tells you they are fixing something on your boiler, I would tell them to stop, and they can contact my office, and we will contact the right liaison and Columbia Gas, and be very clear that Columbia Gas has agreed, you're not fixing that boiler, you're replacing it. But there are some folks who will get assurances from the people that are there, that boiler is not impacted, and they have the right to stay where it is, and it, for some, that makes sense, right?
So one, one more question related to that.
Sure.
It kind of affects my property. Are they required to, to keep the heat, you know, the, the boiler or the heating system or the hot water tank aside for insurance purposes or for Columbia Gas?
I, I, I'm not aware of that. I've, I know they're doing large-scale disposal in several communities, is they're collecting sort of large dumpsters worth of these items. I think when someone makes that declaration onsite, they're taking photos of what's going on in their location, they're, they're looking at the equipment, they're taking photos, they're making notes. That's sufficient for their claims division and their insurance company to recognize something has been. They don't need, they're not going to go out and individually inspect it. Once that person sort of tags that as being impacted, and that's being replaced, it's being replaced, there's not another visit, right? That's part of what these groups are doing, and now they're going to combine this assessment piece with the install piece to try to make it more efficient, because quite frankly, to date, that has been less than efficient, right? They get on the street, they go a certain distance, people are waiting around, we, we hear that. I think it's an important time to say, we do hear what residents say. I, I think most residents, in fairness to residents, have been extraordinary, you folks have been great in giving us feedback, I think residents know we do hear what's being said, and we every day speak to people and say, "Here's what we're hearing, here are the problems." We've been, some folks have identified very critical needs for us, we fast pass those critical needs typically on to the Columbia Gas representative. We find on those really critical cases, you know, life issues of limits of access and those kind of things, they're responding pretty quickly. There's other things that they could be better at. I think they're a little slow in the business response, quite frankly. I think their claims processing is catching up, but it's slow, and I think that, I'm hoping it gets better as they add more resources, but that, I, I say to folks, expect a reimbursement check. I don't expect this to be a one-to-three-day process or five-day process, expect it in 14 to 30 days. I mean, I think it, it should be better than that, and I think it'll get better, but that's what I believe it is today, so if that helps. So if some, if someone tells you that anything on that piece of equipment, doesn't matter which piece of equipment it is, we've said, we've, we've asked the same question about generators and gas inserts and gas stoves, they're going to cut and cap those, they may not get to those by the 19th, and I wouldn't expect that they would, but they should be back to make a further review of those particular assets to determine if they were damaged. So I don't view those as turning the house back on and getting the kind of heat, like in hot water, but they're gas appliances, and several people have them in the affected area, they're likely going to come in and cut and cap those to be safe, and come back and review those after the 19th date. So every gas appliance should be checked, and if you're uncertain and they're talking about fixing anything, you tell them, "No way, no how," phone them to us, and we'll convey that message. Does that help? Okay.
Yes.
And we, we continue to work with them on that to make sure that there's not confusion about it. You know, this doesn't really need to be said, but the bottom line is, no resident caused the gas, caused the gas overpressurization. They didn't cause this inconvenience onto themselves, right? And so there is an expectation that we get to gas-ready, excuse me, that we get to relight and get people's heat on by November 19th. But there's a further expectation of everybody in this community, is that their property is restored to where it was before the event, bottom line. Now, that may not happen in the same way in November 19th. November 19th, to me, is relight, heat, and hot water. But there is an expectation, whether it's the roads, the curbs, their property, or anything else, we expect the properties to be restored in the same condition, at a minimum, as it was on September 12th, or before noon on September 13th, and that's an expectation, and we continue to advocate for that.
So you just made a, a comment about the roads being restored to the same condition. So it was a question that was asked at this weekend's farmers' market, because first three-
Because that's where everything happens.
And so what, is our expectation, is it unreasonable to say now that we, we will see all of those roads repaved, so that way they're not all scarred up? I mean, I know under the course of normal business, if a gas line's replaced, they pave over it, and you have that scar on the street. I mean, most of North Andover's downtown will now have these scars. Do we anticipate that Columbia Gas will be repaving the entire road, so that we don't have?
I would say this, so I would say that it is the utilities' obligation to trench refill, that's their only obligation. I would say that we're in the process of gaining inventory about which ones, so of the 44, 45, depending on who you talk to in a particular day, 13 of the roadway miles impacted are in North Andover. We're currently conducting inventory of the last time that those roadways were repaved. It is my belief that if any of those roadways were repaved in the last five years, because that's typically the sort of critical mass about impacting a roadway, then, then we are, then we should expect, and residents should expect, that those roadways will be fully restored, curb to curb, to where they were. I think that becomes more of a challenge, if you're talking about 10-year-old roadway and a 15-year-old way, it's just not, they're not obligated to do it, and, and it doesn't mean we're not going to fight for that, but I think that becomes more of a challenge. I would say to you that we, we are, whether it's through Columbia Gas or the Commonwealth with the support for the, the governor's office and the legislative delegations, we think there's an opportunity here to make sure that the roadways are restored, especially the ones done in the last five years, because we would have spent a lot of money for that, right? right? And we think there's an opportunity, whether it's supplemental budget or, you know, sub-budget was going to be filed or chapter 90 money, we think there's an opportunity for folks to recognize the need to redo those roadways because what was supposed to be a 20-year road just became significantly damaged. So we're in the process of gathering that information. I think we'll be communicating with the other two communities about that and coming up with sort of a concerted joint effort to approach any number of groups, whether that's just Columbia or the state, to make sure that the roadways are improved. Okay? We're doing that. Sort of one of the multiple parallel tracks to this whole conversation, of which there's many. So if we fly down this going a little faster, you can see the construction project in many ways is actually the easy one to track. In fact, the updated slide today, 20 of the 44 miles has in fact already been repaired or replaced, already happened. So the construction phase, the in-street phase, is in many ways the easiest thing to observe, the easiest thing to sort of manage. Service lines are more difficult, the in-house stuff is more difficult. So they are moving slightly ahead of schedule to completing that on the timelines it presented. But that's one of three pieces, right? That's what I think it's important to understand. As it relates, this generally gives you some sense of what's happening from a call data perspective. This just gives you some general matrix about the number of calls, how fast they're processing calls, how long they last. For most folks, not particularly meaningful in fairness. This bottom chart shows that they have three portable facilities in three of the eight zones, so there are eight zones impacted. North Andover is seven and eight. Those aren't in any other communities but North Andover. And we also zone 2.1 of this, small section of North Andover is in zone two. Most of the impacted area are seven and eight. The seven, box seven check here at the bottom is that RV you see in the parking lot of First and Main that answers people's questions, it's there every day in addition to the claims center to answer more general questions than a claims area. And that's been there now for more than a week and will continue to be there for quite a period of time. As they go, by the way, to this block approach where they commit resources into what they're referring as a block, I'm requesting that they take, they redeploy that RV away from First and Main into the block where they're doing work so that as residents ask questions, they've got a number of Columbia Gas reps there to answer those questions. So we're, they're supportive of that. I think we'll eventually get to that point, but we'll deploy that sort of mobile unit that's at First and Main and move it into the block being worked on so folks have a folks' place to answer questions. This goes to the numbers again, this number's crossed 20,000 today, you know, about 20,000 calls to their call center. Again, I think there's no question that the volume far exceeds their capacity in many ways and I think they're, I think they're working on that and we echo every day the fact we think that they could have improvements in terms of their customer touches, how they communicate, what they're saying, continuity of message, you know, that's an area that they have to continue to make improvements on. These are the data we get about how much claims have been paid out to each community. We've received 2,700 claims that they have, that paid out 1.69 million. I asked, today that number crosses 10 million in total value claims at the bottom. I've asked how much of that was just sort of the gift card initiative upfront. They've told me that was about a million, so about 9 million is paid in claims. I asked if that's checks processed and delivered to residents. This continues to be my concern that they say they process the claim, but it doesn't mean anything to you, you get a damn check. And they turn around and tell me that that is checks that have been cut and mailed. I'll continue to push on that because I think it's, it's been an area where they've had, they've shown some weaknesses. And this goes to the total of units that we, dwelling units, this number, there's a little caveat down the bottom that this number is evolving. Every time they go to a house, they may find more data, maybe there's an in-law apartment, maybe there's something else. So this unit count seems to change somewhat frequently, but right now we're talking about total units in North Andover, about 1,700. I've seen this number as close to, close to 2,000. These are residential dwelling units.
That's one fifth. We have 10,000...
Multiplied by five, it's, it's, it's a third of the town. If you multiply by four, you're at 25% of the town. I mean, this is, you know, these are real numbers. So it's significant.
That's a lot.
It's a lot of people and they...
And if you add up the people living in those, that's a lot of people.
And almost all of them continue to be impacted and I think that's what's important. So you see some notes down here to Bingham Way and Fountain Drive. We identified those two senior housing complexes as priority projects. They continue to work on those. Some of them have been complicated. Bingham, I think, is very, very close to completion and coming back up all the way to relight. If you see them on First Street here, they've been working at First Street for quite a while. They've been working on Fountain Drive for quite a while. There were some complications associated with Fountain Drive. The main gas line ran underneath the building. They had to sort of retool and create eight separate gas services to that. There's been some additional complications in Fountain Drive and I think that, that data about it being just about there is probably needs to be pushed back a week anyway on Fountain Drive from what I heard late today. But Bingham is very close to being completed and up and going. So we're particularly sensitive to the Housing Authority properties. The seniors need to get up and going quickly and I know, again, we continue to emphasize with them the need to get that done as quickly as possible.
What's the condition of those two properties, don't mind me asking, when it comes to like electric, electric water heaters? I mean, are they, what's the impact there?
A lot of them are gas.
So...
So I think Fountain, although, I think the water heaters have been replaced, but they're not gas-ready yet. So they've run, they've run new services that they now have eight separate services opposed to one because of this underbuilding thing, but they're finding some additional difficulties they've got to navigate through. So in the meantime, they've started to replace the water heaters, but can't have hot water unless you have... I did check today with the building inspector, a lot of the water heaters have been replaced at Fountain. Yep, on Fountain I'm talking, but not, but not, not Bingham Way, but on Fountain. But again, you don't have hot water because you don't have gas. Bingham's closer to the gas. I'm pushing them today on some things because I think there are certain items I would have expected to be replaced there that, going back to the earlier discussion, that I'm pushing today on things I expected to be replaced there that my initial feedback is they weren't being replaced, but repaired. And I'm pushing on that topic right now as it relates to Bingham. But Bingham is very, very close. They're short of just having an inspection to turn on the gas, but I want to make sure that in the long term, the assets are being replaced. But they're very close to being have sort of traditional heat and hot water.
So right now, they have neither? Or have we confirmed that everyone...
They have neither in either one of those places. Until you have all, you can't have part of one.
Well, like, I mean, you can have, there are private homes that have electric hot water heaters that have been installed.
Yeah, most of those are gas. Like I know in Fountain, there are gas hot water heaters.
So have we confirmed with Columbia Gas, are they providing some type of service to...
Do they provide any?
Are they providing some type of service to Bingham Way and Fountain Drive so that those people either can be bused over to the YMCA so they have access to hot water?
All they're doing right now is they have, they have committed more assets than anywhere else to those two priority properties, which we have given them as priorities. So that's why you see all the activity over here, you know, probably 20 street crews and the same thing in Fountain, is to make sure those properties go out. The best thing we can do is get them focused on, get Columbia Gas focused on getting those properties up and going so that it's, it's a group at risk we don't have to worry about. We think that's going to happen fairly quickly. They have the same, Columbia Gas wouldn't necessarily provide the transportation to the Y, but we could through our senior, through, through a senior center to do that. We're not getting that. I mean, I've communicated with some Bingham Way folks today and a Fountain, Fountain Drive gentleman this afternoon and they all seem generally to feel okay. They just want the heat back.
Not necessarily the feedback that I've gotten, I don't know if that's...
Yeah, again, that wouldn't be Columbia Gas providing the transport. I wouldn't see it that way, but we certainly could offer that through the senior center if that's the case as it relates to that. I'm hoping that Bingham is on, we'll see where that goes, but I'm hoping Bingham is on this week. I'm hoping it was going to be on last Friday, quite frankly.
And it's not, I mean, like, this is not.
No, I understand.
The town didn't do that. They understand that the town didn't do that, but I think that for them, because they're, they're not homeowners and so they feel like their hands are tied a little bit. And I think that there's some, there's already confusion among homeowners, but for them, I think that there's even...
We can reach out to them.
More.
You know, we have communicated a couple of times with the Housing Authority Director. We're not getting feedback of specific concerns. We continue to offer our assistance in that regard. I give the, I've given Kathy Hoog these updates. She typically communicates back that she's aware of the status. So again, these are, these are our residents and they're important to us. I also want to make sure that the Housing Authority is communicating with us with their needs as well so we're not sort of, sort of competing for resources. But I will reach out to Kathy Hoog and find out if there's people in her developments that are looking for services that they're not currently receiving such as those transportation options.
Yep.
We'll do that. The sheltering is sort of an interesting option, so as you can imagine, I've added this sort of piece to the bottom. This wasn't originally in the Columbia slide. So if you look at hotels, again, this is a couple of days old, so I, we get these in a different form and as I put them together, they're now two or three days old. But the goal is to, is to, these hotel room numbers are increasing. It's 32, 42 as of, I think, the sixth, which was three days ago. Of that, 1,040 are currently occupied by people who have been in hotels since the beginning of the event. 114 of those hotel rooms are being occupied by North Andover residents. That number has been between 100 and 135 hotel rooms occupied by North Andover residents since about the day of the event. And I don't think people realize that. We have 135 individuals, 100 or so, 115, 130 individuals or families who've been in hotel rooms for multiple weeks. And I think people should realize that in the context of everything else that we're sort of dealing with, right? Because it's important to understand that. So I've made those notes. There are a total of 1,040 currently occupied hotel rooms and they, they're split between the three communities. Andover's numbers are somewhat similar to ours. Lawrence is a larger number. There's 164 apartments that have been able to secure. So Mass Emergency Management along with some private contractors are working on the sort of housing plan. Can be relatively complicated. It's multifaceted, as I've communicated to you folks. It's a combination of hotel rooms, apartments, these travel trailers or RVs and concrete shelters. Someone says, well, if you get up to about 5,000 hotel rooms, why isn't everybody in a hotel room? There are 14,000 hotel rooms within a 30-mile radius, 11,000 of those hotel rooms are occupied. Most of the unoccupied hotel rooms that they haven't already secured are 30 miles away. It's unrealistic to expect that someone from North Andover is going to go, you know, south of Boston to get in a hotel room if they work north of Boston or if they have kids. If they have kids and they're in a hotel room, we're required under state statute to transport those kids back to our school district. And so single size doesn't fit everybody as it relates to this. And as they try to secure more and more rooms, it's just evident that those rooms are going to be further and further away from what people are comfortable with. And therefore, the hotel solution is not the only solution. One way that they're getting to this goal down here of about 4,400, I would say 5,000 total hotel rooms and apartments, is a little note down on the last bullet point on the right. They've secured a cruise ship which has floated up from Florida and is waiting some improvements to one of the docks in Boston. That work is supposed to be completed by October 10th. They'll dock that ship and the 1,100 or so workers will board that ship. That'll free up a similar number of hotel rooms, which will make more hotel rooms available to folks who need them. So that has actually happened. The ship is docked outside of Boston Harbor somewhere. They needed to dock it somewhere. That was a little bit of a challenge. They couldn't go to the common docks because obviously there are still cruise ships. They're making some improvements. I believe those improvements will be done by October 10th. The ship will come into harbor and in turn will start to relocate these, these workers so that we can free up these units. We do have a plan for the travel trailers or recreational vehicles. There are a total of 400 coming in the area. We've identified 80 to go on Grogan's. The reason for Grogan's, we looked at as a team, more than a half a dozen spots and location, private and public, to try to figure out the best way to do this. We did this in consultation with police department, fire department, our land use folks, Mass Emergency Management, the contractor they're using, emergency management staff and our own group got in a room and said, okay, how do we do this? There's been multiple site visits to try to figure this out. In the end, these are family units. They house between seven to nine people. In our cases, those might be families of five or six or seven, typically families with younger kids. You want them to be fairly close to their homes. You want them to be fairly close to their schools. This location serves both of those purposes. We recognize that putting 80 travel trailers on Grogan's presents an interesting challenge. People should know the following, that these come fully serviced. There is a contracted company with Mass Emergency Management that provides 24/7 support. There's an admin office for people to check in and get keys. There's 24/7 security. We're going to add 24/7 EMS support to that facility and then we're going to have all that backstop by existing PD who's going to do regular tours in addition to the onboard security folks. The 80 fits, you know, we've seen various layouts, I'm waiting for the final layout. The 80 fits reasonably well and the space that it gives us buffers to the two sides of the, are closer to residential folks. I can tell you that the RVs are not planned for those two sides to make sure that they're away, further away from that. There will be three generators operating the entire facility. I've actually had staff go and listen to the generators, they're what's called whisper generators. They're very, very quiet and they're being situated away from the more dense sides of the development. Three generators powering the whole kit and caboodle. This is in a generator per building. These buildings have propane, they will be heated, they will provide water, they'll provide the ability to shower, the ability to cook. Every day, the management company will make sure that those are restocked in a way that the wastewater is cleaned, that there is new propane if they need it. And it gives the people an opportunity to live there and get a family in there if the weather turns, stay close to home, close to the houses. Well, why do they need to be close to the houses? They're going to have assessments, they're going to have installs. We want to make sure that they're where they need to be so their, so their gas comes back up on November 19th. And quite frankly, we also want some ability for some of these people to walk to these travel trailers as possible and certainly being a reasonable distance so they're not disrupted if they have kids in school. It only makes sense to put them as close as possible. Dividing this means, you know, much more difficulty in terms of management, moves them away from this school district, moves away from the neighborhood. It just didn't make sense. So I know for some folks, this is a little bit of a challenge. I get it. I've had a couple of people communicate, I've indicated that I apologize in advance, but this is what makes most sense for this community right now. It just does. And we know that it's an inconvenience. We have worked the site. We'll be taking down a piece of the older chain link fence. There'll be 80 onsite parking spaces. Everybody will be told they could bring up to one vehicle, but no more, and that'll be part of the process. So that today, as parking happens along one side of the field, we're going to make it so that there could be parking along another side of the field so it's off-street and doesn't impact the street parking. And we'll work with our police department to make sure that people recognize no more than one vehicle has to be parked in this area. We're working with the public safety folks to make sure that a fire truck can get on the site appropriately. All those things are being considered and, and all of the relevant folks or the, the folks you'd want in the room are being included as part of the conversation.
So we won't lose any, any on-street parking potentially? And I know that sounds silly, but only because it was a concern that, I mean, one of the, one of the businesses on Belmont Street expressed concern because there are certain peak hours where they do take up all that on-street parking immediately behind, where Belmont and Baldwin Street intersect.
Correct. I would expect that they will, listen, here's what I expect. I expect everybody in this neighborhood to be impacted. Why don't we just say it? They're going to be impacted. It's one month trying to solve a problem we never anticipated, never want to happen again, right? But it is a, it is a part of a solution we shouldn't abandon because there are people who need part of that solution. And this is a reasonable place to be. It would be foolish for me to argue there will not be some impact on this neighborhood. I can tell you that we've had a lot of discussions and put all the right people in the room to make sure that that impact is minimized as much as possible, including listening to generators, putting the generators away from certain homes and taking down chain link fences to make sure the parking for 40 of the vehicles comes off the street. Do I expect in the middle of a Saturday afternoon when, or whenever dance class and other things happen and everybody's home in their homes, that there's going to be an impact? You better believe it. I can tell you that we're aware of it and we're taking steps to mitigate it and work with the company that's managing this facility so that they're aware of it. And, and that's about as honest I can be about as it relates to this.
Are they, are they allowing pets?
I think they're going to in those particular facilities, again, because they're sort of standalone facilities, it'll be part of that. But I, but I think the fact that this onsite management is important for folks to know, this full-time, 24/7, this is not just parking some trailers and walking away. This is, this is a, a neighborhood is being created out of a certain type of residence, dwelling, and those will be managed with a management company who does this kind of stuff and manages it properly. Yep. And there'll be an intake process and you'll have to call and there'll be priority based on certain kinds of needs like, hey, do you have a couple of kids and they have a young age? Because we can't, we can't possibly expect them to go and stay in their home if it's too cold, right?
And I'm assuming we want North Andover people to be in these as a priority? Make sure all the North Andover people who want a place to go will get the option of this before it's...
I think that's it.
...open to other people.
That's why they've been situated.
So will there be some sort of like deadline communicated? Like if you're in North Andover and you want one of these, you need to call by this time?
I, I don't sure if it's quite that because I think it's hard to do that because what if a situation arises and you don't? I think the expectation is, given the allocation of these resources, is the expectation is a community-specific. So Andover put up, you know, so many of them. Lawrence is putting up 200-plus of them. know, so many of them. Lawrence is putting up 200-plus of them. There's a capacity here to add more if this, you know, God forbid something really bad happens. And we needed to look at a second venue. That wasn't ideal, but we needed more. The good news about this kind of product is they literally, they are literally rolling off the assembly line. These are not some used vehicle sitting in a corner. Most of these vehicles are coming off an assembly line and being instituted for the first time in this location. And our expectation is that it's to address, it's why we put it in this neighborhood. I'm not sure it'll be quite that hard deadline, but the expectation is this, this is for families living impacted in that area. Yes.
So these are brand-new?
Yep. In almost every case, they literally rolled off an assembly line.
And there's a comfort level to that because you wonder where has this been? Who's been here? There's a little bit of an ick factor, not knowing where it's been. So that's really good. I think people will be more inclined to go knowing that they're brand-new.
I agree completely. I think we need to really emphasize that in any of our communications.
Because, you know, it's just the obvious. So we don't need to go there. But yeah, I think that's huge.
So I think that's important. People should know that powered by propane, they all come with a CO2 detector, a smoke detector, and a fire extinguisher. And they are set up to be, you know, these are units that have passed every sort of muster as it relates to from a public safety perspective. And again, they should know there's going to be 24/7 security, which I think is helpful for everybody's comfort.
I think that is huge as well. Just sometimes all that closeness can cause. And everyone's already under stress.
I think it's going to cause collegiality and...
It's going to cause block party. Let's be prepared.
They may not want them to move.
I think, I mean, because I think it's great that it's going in the middle of an impacted neighborhood. But I think because only part of that neighborhood, or I should say because part of that neighborhood isn't impacted, they haven't been following it as closely, the developments with how we're responding to this. I mean, if you're not on Facebook following it and you don't live in an impacted zone, you know that there are things happening. But if you have gas right now, you're not following every detail. And I think that when the RV idea rolled out, there were some red flags, namely for people on Patriot Street, which all have gas and a butt the park. So I think that this provides a clearer and more reassuring bit of information to them to know that there's security 24/7 and that they won't be right up against their fences.
Decision was not made casually. Everything from the lighting, we had some folks go look at the lighting today, what's going on in Lawrence. The lighting units are, you know, faced inward and downward. They have no sort of like broad reflection. All of those things, you know, we've considered everything we can. And we're, I think, nimble enough to make some changes if we need to make some changes. Yep. Sorry.
So suggestion and two questions. One, you know, if we want people to feel comfortable with these, think about how real estate's marketed. You do a 360 view. So it might make sense if somebody does that sort of a, you know, walkthrough with the camera, the video or something like that, that we can post on the site so people know what it looks like. Secondly, what about, I know it's a neighborhood, what about transportation to schools? How's, is that?
We're not going to do that at this point. I think, you know, I think if this is done right, folks will have one vehicle. Whatever their normal, we will coordinate with the schools so that if a family locates there, maybe the answer is yes rather than no. If a family is moving into one of those facilities, we will make, let the schools know they're moving there. So if they otherwise would be provided, sorry, if they otherwise would be provided with transportation, then obviously we need to get them there. And so we'll be communicating with the schools as we become aware of who's, sorry, as we become aware of who's going and those willing to communicate that. So the schools are aware that whatever requirement they have for transportation.
Great. And the last kind of question request is, I had cousins that were in New Orleans when all that hit years ago. And this is not to the same scale, but one of the things that, you know, even after the best plan is implemented, then everybody leaves. And what's left is, we've got this road repair, but we're going to have this field. And there may be other facilities or other parts of town which are impacted by the fact that we've had all these crews here. So I guess I would ask for, and it's probably in your plan because you are generally way down the field, the rest of us thankfully, but some recognition, you know, in a foot race, that's all it takes sometimes. But that there's recognition that that's also part of it, that restoring after this, that those fields and where those workers were, that that's back to where they want.
We agree with you. May I say we? I mean, I talked to the team today. That team includes folks who know the community well, who are very expert, the senior staff, the Spurslaugh, town council. And we talk about these things pretty often. It's a pretty broad brush, fairly broad, not pretty broad brush. It's a pretty wide brush in terms of dealing with those things. We're talking about, you know, we're going to remove a fence. We expect the fence to go back. We're going to, if it rains out there, the field won't be exactly ideal. We're going to have to talk about the impact on the field. We're rolling more police cruisers. What's the impact on the police cruisers? How often do they need to be replaced? Talking today about the fact that one of the things we learned from the event was that we don't often buy one radio per firefighter. And it has historically, in the history of the town, never been a problem. Then all of a sudden on September 13th, we didn't have one radio per person. Well, I'm trying to figure out if that's whose obligation that is. Now, we have an obligation to do that. But the question is, in this case, is that an obligation of others to offset that risk moving forward? It wasn't a risk. Everything worked fine. It was well. Would have been ideal to have one for everybody. So as we're doing capital planning, we're about to replace those radios. We're some number south of that number. Should we be looking at sub-budgets? Should we be looking at claims in terms of protecting our risk in that regard? So we believe every, I can tell you that Lynn Savage is capturing all of the dollars being spent. And you should expect we're going to get in a room with a whole bunch of our folks and then eventually with folks from Lawrence and Andover and share notes about how we've been impacted and develop a pretty comprehensive list as to our expectations for restoration. And again, I mean what I said, who we were on September 12th, we have to be at least as good on the way out. That's the goal.
And I guess I just kind of add to that. I think partially because Columbia Gas was so unprepared, I think the obligation is on they to make sure that we are prepared the next time through. So it's, as you've been saying, it's more than just restoring. We now, and again, I use the New Orleans sort of scenario, they needed to make some very real changes in that community that were beyond where they were when it started. And I would like to see that part of the discussion and small illustration like, as you say, the radios. I think that's absolutely prudent.
And I think you'll see some reference to that in the budget policy statement. I mean, there are four phases to emergency and disaster management, right? Mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery. We're going to do the recovery phase. It's going to happen. But in the end, the question is, what do we do to mitigate this moving forward? And so we're going to start thinking about those mitigation issues. We're going to start thinking about them in the context, you know, who would have thunk it, was my father used to say, right? Who would have thought that this was going to happen, right? We wouldn't have thought this was going to happen. But we learn from this experience. And we decide how to make sure that next time we're better, even though I think we've done a really, a great job and the staff has done a great job, we can always do things better. So how are we better coming out of this is something we've already started to talk about.
And I would just add, you know, not to exactly open a can of worms, but, you know, there are other utilities that impact our community. And I think it sets the table for those discussions with those utilities to say, are you prepared? How would you respond? What should we expect? Because now we've been through it and we can ask very pointed and educated questions to address that.
And in two weeks, Stevie Olson, who did the report on the electric side, is coming to sort of share with you that report, which I've given in hot copy. But he'll give you an update of sort of his findings. It's interesting timing because we're only about two weeks from the year anniversary of which we lost, please do not let us lose power, right? But we're only about two weeks from the one-year anniversary of when we lost power for a significant period of time. So we agree with you that we're cognizant of all of the impact that utilities have on the community. More cognizant than ever.
Thank you.
This is kind of a tough question. And if you don't want to answer it now, I understand. So Columbia Gas has said that they will be willing to restore everything. You're looking at a big list of things that we expect them to pay. Do they have the money? Because I hear this all the time. People, they're probably going to file bankruptcy.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, you know, I look at it this way.
If you don't want to answer it because you don't know or...
I can't answer for them. I would say this, that they're not really Columbia Gas, the NISource. And NISource is a multi-billion dollar company who's publicly traded. And my guess is, you know, has the, is insured and reinsuring around these items. I'm not, you know, to me, it's not, for some it would be, you know, and I'm candid about that. For me, it's not about how much we can squeeze out of the lemon, you know, to make sure. But it's certainly no taxpayer in this community, other than maybe, however that works in terms of rate allocation, right? But no resident in this community should pay directly for our ability to restore ourselves to where we were on September 12th. That's just not right.
I agree.
And so, and I think there's no disagreement with that. I'd be hard to imagine someone disagrees with that. And so that's the perspective we take into the conversation. At the same time, you should know that we also push back when we feel like people are being unreasonable. I don't mean residents, about their expectations for costs. We hear that someone wants to charge too much for, you know, an electric water heater. Quite frankly, if we hear that people want too much for public services, we're, you know, we're pushing back. This is not the gravy train. This is a response effort to a really serious circumstance. And so we're balancing both. But in the end of the day, I, you know, I think I got on long enough to realize they were publicly traded and who they were. But we will pursue all of our interests as aggressively as we think they need to be pursued.
And I guess I would just add, the insurance is a huge, huge part of this. Because when you look at disasters like the Exxon Valdez, you look at BP in the Gulf, I mean, a huge amount of that ticket really was covered by the insurance companies. They're the ones that are going to pay first. And then it comes next from them. So, and I would also reference that in terms of, far as I can see, Exxon and BP are still in business. And those were tremendous-scale disasters. So I have a firm belief that they will be able to pony up for it. I think it's a matter of us presenting the case and being persistent. And I appreciate the town manager's incredible diligence on that.
I'll have to reserve some of those comments. Go ahead.
Well, Chris is right. I mean, and I think that for anybody watching at home, I think everybody gets this, but you're simply the messenger. I mean, we, I think, as a board, have established a really good report where we funnel our information through you so that we are getting it consistent and redistributing it to us in the community. And so this isn't, I mean, nobody thinks that this is a local issue. It's all of us together advocating for residents. One question that was brought up was for those residents that were displaced by fire, whether long-term or short-term, how do we as a municipality handle those property taxes?
Oh, good question. So Mass General Law, Chapter 59...
You did to one of your, somebody in the same boat as you, though.
Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 2D, is a provision within the statute that allows a number of things, including municipality's ability to abate taxes in the current fiscal year when the value lost, not counting land, is at least 50%. So if the property was assessed at 500,000 and the land was 200,000 and the house was therefore 300,000, if it's determined that the loss of value to that house was more than 50% of the 300,000, then if the community accepted 59-2D, then the assessor can make that adjustment in the middle of the tax year, which is highly unusual. And the person has a right to file an abatement within 12 months as opposed to just in the month of January. In 2004, and the authority to make the decision to accept or reject 59-2D is the Board of Selectment under the statute. Under 21(c) of the statute, that's the Board of Selectment's authority. In 2004, that section of the statute was rejected by the Board of Selectment. So we've done some legwork. And it's my recommendation for the next agenda, because we're still doing the legwork, that I'm going to bring back to you a recommendation that the board rescind that rejection effective immediately, effective back to July 1 of the fiscal year at your next meeting. So I'm going to ask, respectfully ask that you rescind the rejection you made in '04 and make them retroactive to July 1, which will allow the assessor, who is already beginning doing their work, to work with the building inspector and the fire department to figure out those properties which were at least 50% impacted. That's the trigger. That's what the statute talks about. Below that, there is not a reference under the statute. I do think the assessor can't take a case-by-case when it's lower than 50%, follow the traditional abatement period, you know, process, and file during the month of January for someone to file an abatement. But this sort of goes beyond that to take situations when there's more catastrophic loss. And so I'm going to recommend you do that. We feel comfortable that we can do that retro to July 1. And that asking you to rescind that rejection is a reasonable decision to make. And that from that, already be prepared to talk to those, you know, half a dozen or so houses that may fit into their category, with the hope that if we can get that accomplished, then on the January 1 bill, you'll actually see an abatement going back like three months and two weeks, right? Back to September 13th. And so that people would see an abatement on their tax bill for the value, not only for the third and fourth quarter, but retro for the second quarter and the portion of the first quarter that was impacted from the date of the event.
Excellent.
So that's what we're going to do. So we learned through this process is that, you know, God knows, whatever the circumstances was at the time, it could have been any number of reasons. It wasn't acceptable. We didn't. The other two communities did. But we feel comfortable, we can rescind that and move forward from that. And so that's going to be my recommendation, sticking to it. And I assume if it wasn't for the ability that we found that out today and we couldn't add it to agenda, I'm pretty sure you folks would be supportive.
Yes.
And so we'll then start to work on a list, work on a communication tool to those residents, let them know what they should expect. For the other people, maybe the, you know, another 25 houses that had some kind of gas fire, would say to them, you know, there isn't a statute that allows us to proactively deal with this. You can use the abatement period if you had some kind of loss, if you feel like, you know, those will be a case-by-case basis, quite frankly. But we should be informing our residents proactively of the options available to them. And this is one option available. And we should be taking advantage of that.
Great.
Does that help? Yep. Great. Other questions? Oh, so there's a sort of glossary of terms at the back of almost all of these. So people know what all these terms mean. I don't need to bore you with the grass glossary details. I'm going to fly through the rest of these because I'm taking too long. So these other two presentations are on the town's website. One is the gas-ready construction plan. What does gas-ready mean? This yellow thing is the pipe in the road. The thing that, you know, sort of laterals or 90 degrees off that is a service line, then a riser sometimes you see along the house, and a meter. Every meter needs to be replaced. If it's inside, it's coming outside. Every meter will be locked and stay locked until we're ready to do gas-ready, house-ready, relight. This excess flow valve, I believe, is a preventative measure being installed to probably prevent some of those things that happened at the nature, you know, based on the overpressurization. Every single service and main being replaced will change this from low pressure to high pressure. The term they actually use is medium pressure. I can't tell you the difference. When the event started, it was low pressure and high pressure. Somewhere along these many meetings, it's gone from low pressure to medium pressure. I can just tell you it's leaving low pressure onto the next level of pressure. So none of the services after being replaced will any longer be on low pressure, which is where the problem occurred. Okay?
So that kind of leads to a question that I don't know. I mean, this may be a higher up question that we would need Columbia to comment, really way high, which is the actual cause for this. Because how can we know that what they're doing right now in the roads to address the issue is truly addressing it without actually knowing what actually caused this?
Yeah, it's a good question. So I'm not going to address the cause of this. It is beyond my pay grade. And frankly, there are federal authorities investigating this, state authorities investigating this. And they are, you know, equipped and skilled to have this conversation. We know their own overpressurization occurred. Everybody sort of agrees to that. It's been out sort of publicly. Why that occurred, who is responsible, ultimately, someone will figure out. I do think that given the sort of belts and suspenders on this project, it's not only fast, but it's safe. The amount of resources being committed to look in these holes and make sure that they're working right, in addition to our own resource, which you know, the board agreed that we hired our own consultants to review this project, to oversee what's going on in each of the communities. They have a war room in Lawrence City Hall where all the maps for these projects, our engineering firm looks at those every day, meets in a construction meeting with the Columbia Gas staff, goes over that, goes out into the trenches, looks at the hole. I feel comfortable that the work being done in the street is safe and ready for prime time and will make people in the end have a better product. As it relates to gas service beyond that, my position is that until such time as someone makes a really firm and clear decision as to what happened and what's being done to make sure it doesn't happen again, I personally would not recommend that you support approving any gas service installations in this community. And I say that knowing that there's some wrinkles to that, right? You may have some new gas installs. But I know that you guys assigned to me the authority of dealing with the short installs and the residential sort of installs. I have rejected a couple of those. I do not feel comfortable until this system is up and running and someone with a high level of skill says, here was the problem, it's been fixed, agreeing to add new services to a system that I can't guarantee is ready to go outside of the impacted area. Now, as those become bigger main replacements, which haven't been the case, no one's asked for that yet, outside of the impacted area, and those come to you, you'll have to make a decision of whether or not you feel comfortable approving those larger, longer main installs, or whether or not you feel, as I do, and I'm not putting you in a corner, this is how I feel, that you may not be comfortable making that decision until someone says, and I believe that's the federal government doing their review, says, we reviewed this, this was X, you should not worry about new installs, or you should not worry about this kind of work. I think that's the reassurance that every resident in this community should have before this agreement to work outside the impacted area. So that's my position. And I'm not putting you in a box on it. If you choose, you no longer want me to make those decisions as it relates to residents, that's okay, too. But my position is no, 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 until we have the kinds of answers to the questions that I just am not capable of providing you. But someone will someday.
I think it's important to have it be said out loud because I hope that there are people higher up at Columbia Gas that are hearing this from us. And I know that residents are talking about it on social media. I know that they're coming into the office and speaking about it with you. They're talking about it at the claim center. We're seeing a tremendous amount of work being done to get people back up with gas. And yet, at the same time, we're admitting we don't really know what caused this. And so as a result, how do we really know that all this work, yes, it's rushing to get these people, not rushing irresponsibly in theory, to get these people back with gas so that they have hot water and heat by the middle of November. But I mean, how do we know that there's not, it's not built into the system that six months from now it doesn't happen again? And I know that there's an investigation happening right now. But, I mean, it leads to that sense of, I mean, here we are, and I hear what you're saying. And I personally agree. Let's not approve any new expansion of this line. But it doesn't actually make me feel better about the current response, which is it's quick, it's efficient. People are being brought back up ideally at a speed that they will find acceptable. And yet, we don't actually know for the work.
Well, I would say two things. I didn't quite say that. I said that before we rolled out the November 19th date, sitting in those rooms, there was two questions asked by the people in the room, and I was, you know, one of them, which was, I don't just want fast, I need safe. Safe first and then fast, right? Or safe first and then restore. And if the safe, and I feel 100% comfortable that the project, given the amount of resources being committed, looking in the holes, consultants looking over work of contractors, our consultants then looking over that work, I feel comfortable that's being done not out of expediency, but out of safety and as fast as you can while being safe. I feel completely comfortable with that. And I would say, we know what caused, I'm going to use the wrong terms, we know why this happens, happened. There was an overpressurization of the gas line. Like, that's not a dispute. We don't know who or how come. That's what we don't know, right? That's a slightly different thing, right? And so this, in that kind of event, as I understand it, from based on what's been said from the beginning, is something that's unique to the low-pressure side of the system, as I understand it. And that's not what, you're not being replacing low pressure with low pressure. These are medium-pressure or high-pressure systems with new valves and those kind of things. things. So I would not have agreed, and neither would you, to proceed with restoring service if it was about expediency and not safety first. It was safety first, then expediency, and I feel comfortable that remains the case. But it's a fair question about, it's a different question to me. Here's the question that I would, I think what you're asking is, I'm a gas customer. How do I feel about gas? Like, that's sort of a rhetorical question, and that's a question individual to individual they'll ask, maybe you don't feel comfortable anymore. That's all I know.
Do you have an idea of how many area, square miles, whatever, area in North Andover has low pressure that's not impacted by this?
No.
Because if I'm a resident out there who's not in this impacted zone, but I'm on a low-pressure line, then I'm holding my breath waiting for this to happen to me, and I would want that low-pressure line to be upgraded or changed to a high-pressure line to avoid this. So on the one hand, yes, I get saying, we're not approving anything, we're not approving some, you know, change to a line, but the other side of the equation is, well, maybe we should approve a change from a low-pressure to a high-pressure line if it's out there somewhere else and it's just waiting to happen.
Well, so to me, that's sort of like two different things, and I completely understand the question. My point, I guess, would be, all I'm saying is, if Columbia Gas came with a plan to replace other low-pressure lines in the community, and it was a comprehensive plan to do that, and it came with the same oversight, remember, this project has been independently overseen by, like, people who do this work at a very large scale, on top of it, we've added our own engineering crowd. If they came with a comprehensive plan with that kind of resources committed to the topic of safety, I completely agree. I'm just saying, until we get to that point where we're completely comfortable with, what are we talking about, what's the scope of work, who's going to oversee it, what is the safety plan, right? I don't think it makes sense to get the normal requests we get, which is, can you go replace 200 feet of this main somewhere? Because I think at this point, we don't know enough to be able to feel comfortable about that.
So do we have an idea of how many people else are out there?
I don't, we're not provided those kind of, like, we have maps of sort of the region of where we're. Interesting post-9/11 fact that I've discovered in the last two years is try to get a utility company of any time to provide you detail about their infrastructure in any way that could be deemed a public document. And I get it, right? They don't want to be sharing that information in a way that others can see, and that is a little bit of the struggle. Like, we can tell you there's a gas main because they're digging it, right? But some of that detail across the communities, not just for gas, but also for electricity. I was in a meeting, we were talking about electricity response, and they were talking about infrastructure, and it was, they threw up a slide, and I said, well, I want a copy of the slide deck, and they said, we have to take that one out. And it was that kind of detail. And so we have some historical information internally, because we've got some folks who have been around a long time and probably can provide that level of detail, and sometimes we're in the roads ourselves with our own crews, so we can provide that level of detail. But exact sort of maps in that way, we don't have those. And I think it's one of the questions you would ask if they came in and asked for a 400-foot linear replacement of a gas main. Well, I want a, I want a full survey of where the low pressure is, how is this resolving the larger problem, right? I think all of that stuff is, you know, beyond November 19th, and we shouldn't, it's easier for now to set it aside, focus on what we're doing, and know that we're not going to forget about that.
Right.
Yep. But it's a very, very fair point.
We know that it, the Eagle Tribune, I think it was two weeks ago, released a map showing where the 27 documented gas leaks are in North Andover's gas infrastructure, which was interesting, because, you know, there's one directly on my house, and I was like, well, that's great, but I'm not in the impacted zone. But it just, I, it sparked a different type of conversation where people were wondering, well, what does, what does that mean then? If they are in that low, low-impact zone, that, it just, people are just a lot more sensitive, I think, anything having to do with their gas, where before that was not something they typically thought of, and so.
I don't know enough about this, but my take is what happened yesterday in Woburn, the response would not have been the same if it wasn't for what happened here. My guess is the overpressurization concept does happen on occasion, and then in that particular case, the reaction was far more dramatic. I, this is my, I guess, from watching it, right? We're not going to turn gas back till Thursday, they're going through 330 houses, DPU put this prohibition on it. It was a different utility, but my guess is this event is causing a hypersensitivity that we'd want it to cause, right? I think that's perfectly appropriate, and I do think that folks will ultimately try to decide whether or not they're comfortable with the utility or not. That's a sort of broader question, individual to individual. And gas leaks, by the way, below ground have occurred for a long period of time.
Hypersensitivity now.
Okay, flying along here. This is an example of the kind of Gantt chart that is sort of put out there around the construction phase. These have been put out in different documents we've shared, gives you an idea. These are service lines, which are different than meters. The service lines represent those connection lines, gives you some set of what's going on. Again, everything sort of ending somewhere short of the November 19 date. This gives you a range of when the first service line was replaced to when the last service line will be replaced. Again, this date is a couple of days old. These are the projects in North Andover simply by project category. Every zone has a subzone, 71, 72, 73, 74. Every project therefore is subdivided into further detail into 63 separate construction projects, and every one of those projects fits somewhere in the eight zones and have a subzone category. And every one of those particular projects can be completed at a different point. So 7.2 here is completed at a different time than 7.6, as an example. But in the end, they all end up about the same. Finally, this was also a document that was put out a couple of days ago, so we just talked about gas-ready, meaning fixing the mains in the street and the service lines. This was the house-ready plan. This is a graphic of what we're talking about, everything inside the four walls of the house, shows, happens to show a gas fireplace, a range, a fridge and a dryer and a boiler, of those kinds of things. This is really small print, and I apologize, but if you could really see this, this gives you a sense of when you overlay the gas-ready, when the house-ready, how sometimes they don't exactly align, but that both would be completed on or around before the 19th. Again, when your house is gas-ready, there'll be a yellow sticker put on the meter. When the house is house-ready, there'll be a green sticker put on the meter. Both of those need to be in place before the relight process begins, okay? Are these are the things that are necessary? There's going to be this assess-and-install process, right? Some people have already experienced this as two phases, and they're going to combine this together as a single phase. So with all that, that's a summary of the documents. I'm going to, I'm showing you this for a reason, because as of last night at 9 o'clock, after, after a lot of conversations and a lot of meetings, if I can get this to work right, this went online on the Columbia website. So this is the Columbia page associated with this project. And as you can see, something very similar to what I had put out on the first slide. And as you slide down from that, it shows you the yellow and green tags, tells you what, if you see that on the meter, what it means to you, which is important, right? And then there's a map. And this map is the entire impacted area, and if you put into this box, I'm not going to do it because we're running, this is running a little slow. If you put into your box the street address, let's see if I can do it. Let's do...
Would you like an address?
65?
65. And there's an E at the end.
I can't even see if I'm typing correctly.
Second one down.
There you go. So this shows on the left the expectation of what they would be accomplishing in that region. So understanding your property was impacted in a different way, you'd expect people in that neighborhood to see this following material. The work in the road will be done on or before November 5th, okay? The house, meaning work, again, yours is different. So again, understand that, that this is, it is house-specific, but there are going to be some anomalies. I think we can agree that Rosemary's house is anomaly, but someone in that, in that area would expect to see something similar. A house-ready date, that means the interior work by a date specific, and the relight by another date. The latest day that relight will be on anybody's home in the impacted area is November 19th. Some people will see November 9th, I've seen some on November 7th, I've seen a handful, certainly on November 19th. And that they can do this parcel by parcel. They can drill down to their house. If they don't see their street, if they don't see our house, they can contact our office, we'll communicate with Columbia Gas, we'll find out why we've been checking on those streets that were left off that original list, they seem to be incorporated those. And this will be what we refer to as a heat map. Every two to four hours, it'll be updated. If work is done, then they will make live this information. If something's a day ahead of schedule, it'll be updated. If the gas-ready happens on it before November 5th, you'd see, in fact, that that work was completed. So instead of November 5th, you'd see the word "completed" there, or "complete." So folks would know that that's complete, okay? And people can do that for every impacted address within the impacted area, house by house, which we think will help folks get a sort of handle on themselves and what's happening in their particular sort of world, okay? So that's, I'll link right on the Columbia Gas website. I would suggest that folks get on that. If they find something about the information they're not comfortable with, they certainly can email or call the office. We'll forward that to the Columbia Gas representatives and make them aware of any sort of outliers or anomalies or other things going on. Okay? Any other questions?
No, thank you very much for that very comprehensive report.
We'll try to make the next one shorter.
That was wonderful. I was going to ask if anyone minds if we go out of order to allow those in our, in our audience tonight to skip ahead and not have to hang out the entire time. We can take Joyce, or I assume you're here for the signing of the warrant, Joyce?
Well, thank you very much, and I have to say, we're anticipating a fairly strong turnout because of a lot of the phone calls we'll be getting for people that really truly appreciate what their government does for them. I think watching everything unfold, they realize how much they depend on the state-level, federal-level, and local-level people. And it's refreshing to hear that they, they're certainly looking to make sure that their vote comes, but they have a strong appreciation of everything everybody has done, and when a disaster hits of the people that are behind the scenes making all these, making their town safe. So thank you very much for the opportunity just to give a brief update. The last day to register to vote, to be eligible to vote in the November 6 election, is October 17th. Our office will be open till 8 o'clock. We also have absentee ballots that are available now in the office, so if somebody, if that's a good time for them to come to vote, we're happy to do that. We've seen a lot of people already come in in person to vote. Can also be requested by mail. Overseas voters can just send us an email, and we're able to email their ballots. We'll also be providing early voting for this election. That begins on October 22 and ends on November 2. People can actually come in, cast their ballot, and put it in an envelope. And so that's available for all normal business hours, and also I will be open from 9 to 1 p.m. on the 27th of October. All this information's been put on the, on the, on the website. And the deadline to vote absentee is on Monday, November 5th, till noon, so you have till noon to apply. We're also happy to get the word out, to have people check their voting status. I've been getting anywhere between 25 to 40 emails a day of people who've checked their status, and they'll look and say, just confirming that I'm okay. We had somebody that had moved, thought they changed their voting address through the post office, which isn't automatically how it happens, and now we have plenty of time to, you know, make sure we get him the proper voter registration form, even though he's a Boston resident now. So that's a very important thing. If everybody just takes the time to make sure that if they don't vote on a regular basis that they're okay, we still have time to be able to allow them to register to vote. It's very, it's very rewarding to be able to do that. We can check anybody's status in Massachusetts, and now, as of today, we have 20,140 voters. So that's a lot of voters there that, having all the electronic and the feedback does, does assist us. So thank you so much. And the polls will open at 7 a.m. and close at 8 p.m., only because of the technology that we have now. We, in the past, before we had early voting, opened the polls at 6. There's just no good way of accommodating that. And also, anybody that might be in the impacted area in any of the communities, you need any kind of voting help, we can assist with the forms for other cities or towns, or any of our residents that might need some special accommodation to be able to allow them to vote, just give us a call, we're happy to help.
Awesome.
Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joyce. So do I hear a motion on the warrant?
I move that the Board of Selectmen sign the warrant for the November 6, 2018 election.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Your work's cut out for you, Joan.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I didn't introduce myself. Are you here for a specific item?
Yes, I normally just apply the local license with Suzanne, but she said I should probably not.
All right, we'll take that under the licensing issue then. Okay, so we'll move back to our regular schedule. So our next item is acceptance of donations. We have a donation from Adrian Dawson in the amount of $100 to be used for supplies for the late cleanup day. Take our motion.
Move the approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. We hear a motion to move into licensing.
Move to move, motion to move into licensing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, we're in licensing. All right. So once again, we're starting off with a request from Paul Gaunt from Merrimack College for 10 one-day wine and malt licenses for concessions at the Athletic Center on Friday, November 2nd, from 5 to 10 p.m. Friday, November 9th, from 5 to 10 p.m. Friday, November 16th, from 5 to 10 p.m. Saturday, November 17th, from 3 to 8 p.m. Friday, November 23rd, from 3 to 8 p.m. Saturday, November 1st, from 3 to 8 p.m. Friday, November 7th, from...
You meant to say December.
Did I say December? Yes.
You said November, sorry.
December, thank you. Friday, December 7th, from 5 to 10 p.m. Saturday, December 8th, from 1 to 9 p.m. Friday, December 28th, from 5 to 10 p.m. And Monday, December 31st, from 3 to 8 p.m. And we've got in our packet all favorable recommendations from police, fire, and building departments. Is there any discussion?
Move the approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let me note, before we kind of move on to the next thing here, I chatted with our town manager about taking a look at our process in working with Merrimack College and sort of, is there kind of a way for us to make this more efficient, but also more transparent? I know there were a number of questions last time about what was being served and where was being served and so forth. So I just wanted the Board to know that there's some work being done, and Town Council Egan is kind of taking the lead on that. So we hope to have more insight and maybe some suggestions about how to kind of make this more functional, but also provide kind of a level of transparency as to what's going on, and I think kind of get Merrimack College a little closer to this, this process, as they're growing as a community, the scope of what they're offering is expanding, and quite frankly, the impact in our community is growing.
Thank you for the initiative on that. I think it's a great idea, and I've had a couple of conversations and see where it's headed, and I think it's going to be really good.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm hopeful, I think we'll do fine. And next, we have a request also from Merrimack College for three-day beer and wine licenses. The first one is a reception at the Athletic Complex on Friday, October 26th, from 5 to 10 p.m. A celebration, the second one is a celebration in the tent at Collin Ave, across from the Rogers Center, on Friday, the 26th, from 6 to 11 p.m. And then a reception at the 47 Lounge on Saturday, the 27th, from 10 to 5 p.m. And again, we have everything in our packet signed off by police, fire, and building inspector. Any comments or concerns?
No, I have no approval.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
All in favor.
Okay. Next, we have a request from Catherine Babino from Stevens Coolidge Place for a one-day Next, we have a request from Catherine Babino from Stevens Coolidge Place for a one-day wine and malt license for a Halloween party on Friday, October 26th, from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. Again, we've got everything signed off in our packet. Is there any discussion or concerns? Anything anybody wants addressed in this?
Sounds like a fun event. I would have approval.
Okay. Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And the last item we have, and I think we've got somebody to speak to it here, is a request by...
That's covered that, okay.
I'm sorry, we're...
Did you want to say something?
Yeah, please, if you'd...
Do you want to talk about the event?
If you'd like to take a moment and tell us about the event. But you came all the way here. Come on, sure.
You can talk anything you'd like.
As long as it's not about gas, all right.
No, no. Although, when, I think you guys met JT from Notch Brewing last time we were looking for a liquor license. And that kind of was, the gas explosions happened the first night of that event, and we kind of all just hunkered down in the field thinking, "We can't go home, but we're hopefully safe, not near any buildings." So it's kind of a little neighborhood party for us to kind of figure out what our next steps were together. The liquor license I had come here today for was, we've, at Stevens Coolidge Place, we've had kind of a non-scary Halloween event Saturday and Sunday the last couple of years. It's been really popular. And as we've expanded our programming efforts, I thought, "Well, we carved like 400 pumpkins. Let's add a Friday night just for adults." Because it's been, it's been a lot of fun with the pumpkin trail, and we do a lot of family programming, and, you know, not everybody has kids or not everyone wants to bring their kids everywhere, so let's just do an adults-only version. And, yeah, the response has been really great. I think it'll be a lot of fun, costumes encouraged, so...
Awesome.
Yeah, thank you for approving that.
Absolutely.
So, I guess we should have asked this before we approved it, but this is going to be the same sort of setup with the, you know, exits blocked and whatever alcohol system.
Yep, signage, exits blocked. It's going to be away from that large field on the edge of the property, so kind of like the greenhouse and over.
You diagrammed that for us.
Yes, yeah, that's right. I submitted a diagram with it.
There was actually a diagram in there, so...
Yes, you kind of see both the cluster of where the food and drink vendors will be is away from the edge of the property as well as the trail of jack-o'-lanterns itself. So it won't be kind of one large cluster in anywhere in particular.
You have one little problem, though.
Yes.
You won't be able to see what the people look like or what their age is. So you're going to have to be a little bit careful about...
Yes, so, yeah, in my marketing of the event, it's, people have reached out, like, "Can I bring my kids?" "No, this is 21 over." But also, the vendors will be carding.
Yeah.
Good.
Unfortunately, they have to.
Yeah, no matter what your costume looks like, your age will be on your license.
Yeah, great. No free pass.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Good.
Any other question?
No, again, thank you. It seems like you're getting a good rhythm with our community and we're really excited about that.
Yeah, the response in general has been amazing. Everything from finding worms with three-year-olds to adults in costumes. It's been a lot of fun.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last, we do have a last-minute request from Deborah Ingles for two one-day all-alcohol licenses for weddings at Small Act Farms. Actually, one's a wedding, one's a corporate event, is it not, Lori?
This is not what we talked about.
Okay, that's another.
Didn't get on the agenda.
Didn't get an agenda off of it. Will follow that, and I will make comment to that. So we have two weddings on the 13th and another on the 20th from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. And again, we've got full information in the packet. Let me know, because it's probably just as appropriate. We've talked about the sort of last-minute request, and again, Lori, I really appreciate your patience in dealing with these last-minute requests. So we have set our policy that we need to have notice 30 days prior to, just sort of fit it in with our timing. And particularly now, there's so much going on at Town Hall that sort of pushing things through is now even more impactful. So I've requested that, moving forward, and this is a perfect illustration, if they need something less than 30 days, I want to have notice as the licensing chair first in advance to try and vet why it's less than 30 days, and then also to give Lori and Town Hall a heads-up so that it's just not lobbed in, so to speak, and you open up an email not knowing it's coming. I think that's the first step. We've talked about maybe some sort of a rush fee and doing some analysis. That doesn't seem to be what other communities are doing, but I do think there's a little bit of jawboning that I'd like to have your, I guess, okay-to-do with these folks and push back a little bit. Because, as I said, last-minute rush, and we got one, came in Thursday, right?
Today.
Today. They were talking about it on Thursday, but it was submitted today.
Yeah, that's true.
Right, yeah. It just, a little frustrating.
I mean, I don't think a rush fee is, I mean, if no one else is doing it, well, I mean, who cares? I mean, that's kind of...
I think what, I think really what, because we've had this in the past.
Yeah.
And what really takes them back a little bit is when we'll say, "Sorry, no of that." And, oh, you give them a warning, maybe two, and then that's it, and you hold them to it. I think Joyce can, and boy, did Merrimack College in particular, they fell right into line.
Right. It means the new online permitting makes it a little bit more streamlined. And, I mean, we certainly will emphasize with them that they really have to, you would imagine a wedding or something like that would be planned with enough events, or this would be right to have some kind of special reason why the request was not processed earlier. And sometimes it very well could be that they just haven't...
They don't understand how things work.
Things last minute, but at least if you have notification, this is outside the boundaries, and this is a reason why.
Not that we would ever stop a wedding. It was like a few days away. I don't think we would ever do that, but, and it was amazing, those stern warnings, how things change really quick. So something to think about, you're the chair, so...
You know, I can appreciate, you know, corporate event, they all of a sudden decide, "Okay, we want to do this," or "We got bumped someplace." Help me understand that. But I don't, I really don't understand weddings. I mean, if that's a matter of they're waiting, waiting, waiting to send the money, they've got that in reserve. And again, maybe this is a discussion, Lori, we can have another time, but, I mean, wouldn't you rather know and have that queued up? And then if it doesn't come, okay, we haven't moved forward, but at least it's on the agenda, you know, it's coming, and when you get within 30 days, it's like, "Listen, is this going to happen? Tell me yes or no, or why we're going to wait two weeks," rather than, what I'm hearing is, "Well, we didn't actually get the deposit until two weeks before. They didn't finally commit." But you had a contract out there. And so somewhere, early warning or early submission, so we got to kind of work through this a little bit. And I'm certainly calling the collective intelligence of this body to figure it out a little better.
I subscribe to what Selectman Keane said, just because no other committee has a rush fee. I mean, I think that we're pretty accommodating, and I think the point was made about the weddings. You know, far enough in advance, but fees have to be associated with work performed.
And I would tell you this, so maybe in extreme circumstances, but today, we're sort of knee-deep in the Thursday after the weekend in something called the gas disaster.
Yep.
And this becomes, Lori, if you can stop what you're doing to prioritize this corporate event.
Yeah.
It seems a little...
Absolutely.
Yes.
Misproportion, and I understand that's an extreme, but it could be something else. Where, you know, we, we're busy, we have things to do, and if we have to set that aside to do something, this is the opportunity cost. So if you're, if you're not willing, no, willing, that's unfair. If you're not willing to say no when they don't meet the criteria, which sometimes no works, and maybe it only takes once, then I think there's a real cost associated with putting aside the work we're doing, stop and focus on this, because we would not have done that today.
Mm-hmm.
You just wouldn't have done it today.
Yeah.
I understand.
And so something else got put aside.
Absolutely. I'm in favor of some sort of penalty fee because of opportunism.
All right, so we will, well, we're in the middle of this, but we'll put something together for the next meeting to discuss. We'll put that on the agenda, and let's talk about that, and I'm definitely, definitely open to that, and that's all. That said, do I have a motion to go forward with this? No rush fee at this point.
No rush. Mr. Chair, motion approval for the two one-day liquor licenses on October 13, 2018, and October 20, 2018, at Small Act Farms from 9:00 a.m., from 4:00 p.m., excuse me, until 10:00 p.m.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that. Can we just also issue a reminder around these curtains, sound curtains, and the fact that they need to be quiet for the cleanup and all that?
Thank you. Much appreciated. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and I'll have your motion.
Do I have to move out of licensing? A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Out of licensing.
Okay, so now we're back on to consent items. I think we're on item B. Request of James Dossett, Two Streets in North Andover for the 29th Annual Cambridge Sports Union Roller Ski Race on Sunday, November 4th, from 9:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. Don't think James is here, so...
Sounds great. I move approval.
Second.
Clear to Milk Street to Johnson Street to Race Street to Chestnut Street and back to Milk Street.
Pretty good loop.
Yeah, we just note that all of, yeah, these streets are outside of the gas construction area. Just in case anybody was wondering.
Things are really bad, they're sliding through the fence.
We have a whole different level of review now for things.
Thanks. All right, I think we had a second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, the next item is an affordable unit resale for Harvest Drive, Unit 116, Oak Ridge Village Maplewood Reserve Unit.
Madam Chair, move that the Board of Selectmen waive their right of first refusal for For Harvest Drive, Unit 11.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is the request of the Health Department to surplus an AED unit. Any questions before we...
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the request of Brian Lee Grass, Director of Public Health, to surplus Light Pack 500 AED Serial Number 13559105.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have two appointments.
Yep. Selectman Valencourt is not here, so speaking for the Appointment Subcommittee, we have, I think, filled everything, but it's sort of like that, you know, that pot of water, there's always a, there's always a leak somewhere.
Something changes.
Something changes. But we've filled the last two openings at this point. Brian Middleton Cox on the Cultural Council, great experience, kind of working with kids in the community, and Justin Gourbey on the Festival Committee, really excited people that kind of support our community. So once again, I recommend them highly for both of these, and I would for your approval.
I'll read the motion with the term dates, just as a new procedure.
Yes, indeed. Move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Brian Middleton Cox to the Cultural Council for the term ending June 30, 2020, and Justin Gourbey to the Festival Committee for the term ending June 30, 2019.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you for volunteering. Makes our community move.
Okay, moving on. The next item on our agenda is, under New Business, the FY '20 Budget Policy Statement Overview. Everyone should have received a draft in their packet. Do we want to review it, or, I assume everyone's had a chance to read it? I've already given some of my feedback directly to our town manager, so I think that's already been incorporated, so I don't know if I will.
So the goal would be to get some additional feedback and come back at the next meeting and to look for the board to approve that.
Right.
And so this is really what you have now is a working document. I think it reflects what I've gotten generally as feedback, not just this year, but feedback in the past. Any additional feedback you want to provide, if this meeting would be great, and then we would come back on the 22nd. Is that right? The 22nd, your next meeting, and ask whether they want a consent so they get adopted.
So two things, if I could. One is, it's not addressed in here directly. I know it's covered on the umbrella, but our schools aren't kind of, are kind of vacant in this.
They're now in it because...
We don't have the new version.
Yeah. I provided that feedback as well.
Okay, great.
So what the comment, the additional language added to the agreement, to the document, is that, which is certainly has been opposition for many years, is that we will support from budget perspective, the long-term strategic plan of the school department that's been adopted.
Great.
Which is really about reducing classroom size, right?
Yeah.
And so we've supported the reduction of classroom size by action in the last couple of years. The updated document reflects that we'll continue to do that, and the budget you will see from me will incorporate sufficient dollars to do that.
Excellent, great.
And then the Facility Master Plan, I think Regina can talk about that, but that's in the updated language as well, is just recognition that we're proceeding in this year with hiring consultants to start the Craft Facility Master Plan 2, which will address the work that was done by, consulted by the school department, will evaluate through the elementary schools, and also look at the station, the fire station along Salem Street as examples.
The feedback generally, I had the exact same feedback, and part of our discussion was, you know, the wording here for us would be, provide sufficient funding for the schools to stand the trajectory for their plan, because ultimately, it's the school, the elected school board...
Right.
To work with the superintendent to determine how the funds should be allocated to what thing, you know? I mean, like, if we were to say, funding for the teachers for extra classrooms, I mean, it's within the school committee's purview to say, "Well, we changed our strategic plan, and that's not what we think is the priority," or whatever. I mean, we all know that that is their priority, but, so, that's why we ended on the language that we ended, is our, our perspective is to provide them enough funding to do what they need to do. They decide what they need to do.
No, that's, that's great. I think that's sort of, when you, when you read it, and that piece ties it together nicely. The other kind of general comment, because I know that somehow those initials seem to follow me around, OPEB. We really came to a point where you kind of look at this thing and you tear it all apart, and then you realize, maybe there's kind of a simple way, simple isn't really the best term, but there's kind of a direct way to address this. And it's really through what the underlying discussion's about, which is reserves. And one of the things that, you know, you've done as town manager is not just build reserves, but build a policy that helps the rationale as to where it is and where we're going with it. And suddenly, when you kind of step back and you look at OPEB, it's like, why should that be any different than our stabilization fund or any other policy? So I kind of look at that after kind of all our discussion and our kind of subcommittee meetings and say, "Why not just build that right into our policy and just bake it in?"
So here's, here's my suggestion, is really, so my suggestion is, I was going to bring it up at a different time, but this is as good as any, right? Is that we do have within the reserve policies, an OPEB policy. But if you would provide me a reasonable amount of latitude, what I would do is take the conversations you've had in the committee and draft a plan based upon all of that sort of spitballing against the law, and come up with a plan of how to get to a goal. And provide that to the committee first and say, "Okay," because it's multifaceted. It's, you know, directing revenues, changing some policies, there's a number of different ways to sort of attack this. And based on the feedback I got from the committees, we have all these items, but how do we synergize that around one focus? Are we trying to fund the ARC? Are we trying to fund one year of liability? And come up with sort of a draft of, which is sort of, it's sort of a menu choice, right? And say, "Here is a way to look at OPEB, you know, chopping the tree down from $120 million to, you're not going to fund $120 million, right? You're going to fund a portion of it that allows you to be sustainable and supportable, and it's something that the bond rating agencies look at and some things that's merit. Here's how to get to that number, whatever that is, whether it's what we call the ARC, or whether it's, whatever it is, here's what the goal is, and here's how in the next five, six, seven years, we get to that goal. Convert that into a financial reserve policy, give it to the committee first, you guys do with it what you want, and in the end, it's the work product that we put out by the committee that this board ultimately needs to adopt. So it gets converted into a reserve policy. Because we have a reserve policy, it's not, it just was a reserve policy when we had nothing, and so it sort of resembles that, we'll get to this far, and I think there's an opportunity to go beyond that. I think we can get to meaningful reserves to sufficiently cover, you know, the li, a portion of the liability. Kind of portion that should make us feel comfortable, without overcommitting to saying we're going to somehow fund all $120 million, because very few, there's one community doing that, and it's one of those communities that can do that. Our view would be, here's a series of steps you can take. You know, things like, if you have a half a million left in health insurance at the end of the year, and the expenditure, 10% goes into a fund, right? And I'm using one example, but little pieces like that would set aside some meaningful dollars every year, between the next five to 10 years, that gets you to a reserve fund for OPEB that's consistent with some acceptable standard. And I think that standard would be eight to 12 million based on the act, or something like that. And I can draft that far and just give it to the committee as sort of a leading document, then the committee can decide what they like about it, edit it, and get you closer to actually delivering back to a recommendation that's for it.
Well, that kind of leads into something that I've been thinking about, in particular with, and partly it came about because we've had some restructuring of staff, and so forth and so on, but I think it would really be wise, I know at the state level, they've got a hiring freeze, I'm not necessarily suggesting a hiring freeze, but what I would be suggesting is, that if there is a new position created, we need to look at ways of making it more affordable in the, in ways of, should it be a contract from outside, where we're not paying the benefits? But I think we need to look at long-term, when we have a new position, what is that going to cost the town in particular ways of OPEB? And are there ways to alleviate that? But more importantly, we should justify before we make the decision for a brand-new position. And perhaps even have the Finance Committee review it, so that we know this new hire of, say, I don't know, $75,000, what are the benefit costs that are going to be incurred by the town, and what could potentially add to our OPEB debt? The other thing I would like to consider as well is perhaps we need to start thinking about retirement benefits for new hires. Can we change that? Can we just...
Be it health insurance benefits, or...
Yeah, health insurance, yeah. So those are things that I, I think, it's the town making a statement saying, we know we've got this debt, how do we make this better? And also, and justify it. Somebody's calling in.
Sure, good.
Sorry about that. I thought this was...
And I think it's, and I think the only way to do that is to take, is to, there's not a single answer. So every time, I agree that what I would likely give back to the committee will be some language which indicates that every time anybody's hired, you get from the actuary, not the Finance Committee in fairness, not increases into that, but their experience, but the actuarial cost of, of the OPEB liability for every hire. Now, that could be an estimate and say, every person at $75,000, who's a male or female, and in this age, this is what the cost is, it can be, so we can get a template that does that, right? And I think that that should be, we should know that upfront. In fairness, though, if we're reducing classroom size, guess how we're doing it?
I understand that.
Grand teachers, so we should, one of the things we need to do is...
You have to just justify it.
Well, I'm not sure...
Know what we're going to...
Part of the words. The reality is, we have to be aware of that.
Right, right.
Because justification is, is, right, that's a tough word, right? It's, we have to be aware of what that means when we do that, and I think, so it's foreshadowing, every time we hire a person, and we get the actuarial cost, we need a way to set aside the liability associated with that hire in the fund.
It's a 401K concept, where you start from, right from the beginning, although I will say that where we are right now, we've already shifted that trajectory, because a lot of the bucket that we're carrying right now is a function of decisions that were made 10 and 20 years ago.
Oh, even probably more than that.
And so, you know, going forward, just even in the past five years, the incremental weight of that is significantly, is not of the same significance as those decisions that we made 10 and 20 years ago, and negotiated contracts. See, the other problem is, you negotiate, a hunk of this is also in the negotiations.
Well, I'll push a little on that. It's health insurance.
Right.
Health insurance is no longer in the collective bargaining agreements, it's simply done by agreement to be in the GIC. What's a significant step we have made to the budget and to the, to the OPEB, was switching to lower-cost premiums, because lower-cost premiums mean lower liability as it relates to OPEB. This is only about health insurance for retirees. So if the premium for an individual is $5,000 five years ago, and it's $4,000 today, your OPEB liability declined, and the decision to go to the GIC offset our OPEB liability by tens of millions of dollars, because the premium cost was lower. So this is why staying in the GIC is really important, because if you went to a, you know, back to where we were, as an example, even the same product, if it was more money, right, that cost of the premium means a higher OPEB liability. So in the last five years, one of the key decisions we made was to go to the GIC, lowering premiums, lowering the OPEB liability. And so that's an advantage, and an advantage we shouldn't shy away from. I have generally been reluctant to recommend, and will continue to be so, to do so. The only flexibility you really have beyond that is to change the percentage contribution of seniors. Some communities, there's a minimum requirement of 50%. Some communities have taken that number from 65, where we are, to 50%. That's not going to be, you guys, I mean, the group can decide what it wants, that's not going to be in my recommendation, because my position historically has been, the person most capable of paying health insurance is the person who's an active employee. As soon as they become a retiree, their pension goes down a sum number lower, and then we're asking to pay more of the premium. But there are some communities, because the Board of Selectmen owns that individual authority, which is different than what you own under the actives, is to take that down a 50%. It does affect your OPEB liability, but it...
It was a promise.
It's, I think it's a promise.
And that's the thing that makes it difficult. That's why I made the suggestion, maybe we need to look at new hires.
Could be, as relates to retired health insurance benefits. There's other provisions, I had recommended some years ago. If an employee does not have health insurance at the time they retire here, they shouldn't be able to come back five years later and add health insurance, and we've never closed that gap here, as the gap closed by most communities. We allow people to re-enter a plan. If they never had health insurance, and they're a municipal employee and retired here, having been on their spouse's plan or otherwise, we have not closed the gaps where folks can come back into the system post-retirement.
Interesting.
We've never closed that gap, and we should, and it's a small item, it doesn't, it's not changing the gain, but it's one of those things that, that most communities have seen as generally low-hanging fruit, because the people weren't done on health insurance to begin with, they never paid into the system, and we've incurred the liability. So I think there's a couple of items like that. What I'm going to do is try to throw out sort of a, a series of options to get you to a goal, and then the committee will have to, because it's a committee, committee will have to make some recommendations back to the full board, and pick which ones you think make more sense, but I think it's everything from determining what the cost of a new employee is, starting to 401K that by setting it aside, so that every decision comes with, if I told you the $75,000 means I got to add $10,000 a year to this, at least you know the economic choices.
Exactly. So then you weigh it, you weigh it...
And then make the other decisions, like closing the gap as it relates to, you know, some of these smaller sort of gaps we can close, and possibly looking at the prospect of how, you know, people who aren't hired today but are hired tomorrow, how their, how their health insurance at retirement is...
I think you summarized exactly what I said and did it better than I. The only other thing that I would think we need to be open-minded to is maybe some positions being contracted positions, so we don't have any of that.
Yeah, it's just not going to be teachers where the bulk of the hires are.
I know, I understand that.
And fair, I'm not criticizing teachers, but the reality is...
No, it's just the nature of...
It's the nature of the work. You can't contract a teacher.
But, or also just having even a two-year contract, you know, hire somebody for a two-year contract, or whatever, and then decide whether or not you want to renew it. It's just, just different approaches.
Yep. I think every time you brought that up, we, I completely support it. I think the reality is, we've added a net one of non-public safety jobs and non-library jobs. Library jobs aren't going to be contract jobs. The only staff we've added...
Nor are the police, really.
Police, fire, and library. It has been sort of one net add beyond that, other than sort of moving people around the same boxes, and, and I think in cases where we do that, we should evaluate it. I think it's a common sense thing to do.
Great, thank you.
Random, I was having a conversation with a peer today, and it made me think about how in other communities, elected officials are still offered health insurance. We got rid of that years ago. I mean, 2006, we got rid of elected officials having health insurance in North Andover, it was abolished back in 2000.
I'd say active, active elected officials cannot have health insurance based on a vote. Someone can help me, eight, seven, eight, nine?
It was a long time ago.
Yeah, a long time ago.
But if you're, if you're an elected official today in North Andover, and you retire as an elected official, which means if you serve two terms, you're allowed to retire under state retirement law, you're eligible for health insurance as a retiree, because what the town meeting voted was, that active elected officials could not get benefits. But if you retire, you now become a retiree, and technically, the control of how retirees' benefits work are in the hands of the Board of Selectmen, not town meeting. And there has not been an action by the Board of Selectmen to say that a retired elected official would not be eligible for health insurance.
Hypothetically, I am in my second term as a selectman.
Yes.
I'm 31 years old. When I'm 33, 34...
There's no need to brag.
I choose to retire, I choose to retire. I can be on the health plan as a retiree.
Yes.
You'll get kicked out of the house first if you try that.
Why would they, why would they kick me, why would my wife kick me out if I was retired?
That's a way to make sure.
My wife might kick me out if I run again, actually, but that's...
No, but you're still, you can't be, you're still expected to pay for those three little dollies that, for their college and their future, so I don't think...
You're making the case?
I don't think you could really retire.
Look, that's an interesting, that's an interesting...
I think the spirit of town meeting at the time was to say, and I wasn't there, but it makes sense to me from what I could see, the spirit was elected officials, I think there was some salary adjustment at the time, made at the same time meeting, the spirit was that elected officials should not get benefits, and that was an active conversation in a lot of communities.
It came mainly from the Finance Committee, and it went from 2,000 to 5,000.
The stipend for the selectman at the time...
Yes, which had been 2,000 from time immemorial, pretty much, but...
So a selectman making 5,000 may retire after two terms getting $35 a month, but they're getting a $5,000 health insurance benefit a year. And that's, and it doesn't happen often, but I think it's just one of those things that, in the spirit of making a lot of change, this is a relatively, it's easy for me to say, a relatively easy change to make. So I'm going to put sort of all those out, there could be 10 or 12 or 15 recommendations, calculating the cost of every employees that come in the door, contract employees, all of those things. It'll give the committee an opportunity to sort of pick and choose to get to a modified policy, because we have a reserve, but that needs to be amplified and strengthened so that it gets to the goal.
Yep.
Right? And I'll start to work on something like that.
Thank you, Andrew. You have free time, right?
In between a few minutes. We can work on that. That's important.
Any other comments for Andrew on this?
Good, not on this.
Okay. So we'll be voting on, any other comments you can send to Andrew over the course of the week, and we'll, we'll have a final version to vote on in our next meeting. Okay, Town Manager's Report.
One last thing. On the neighborhood thing, don't forget the trees.
You've got the playgrounds there.
It's in there.
Did I miss that?
Yep.
I'm sorry.
Trees are in.
Because that's been on every single, and not all up at, up at the common, we want to see trees in the neighborhood.
No more at the common, I think.
There's too many, there's a forest growing at the common.
That was all approved by the Board of Selectmen, that forest tree plant. I was, I think I was there for that one. I'm not sure. No, there is, there's a street tree plant in the, in the...
Because, you know, we don't want to citify our neighborhoods, we want them to look like pretty, pretty great neighborhoods.
I mean, I gave a very long extensive report at the beginning, we, again, are confident we'll get to the November 19th date, we'll continue to advocate for residents in the Board to get there, and remain largely focused, our entities remain largely focused on getting that done, and we'll continue to work on it.
Okay, anything on the job posting log? It's in our packet.
After that. Anything on the job, any new jobs that you're adding?
The thing I did not add, but the Board is aware of it, was on my manager's report, so at next meeting, I'm going to be recommending, so reached agreement with the fire union, and I know that the Board and I have discussed it, but we did not make it in time for this consent item. They're going, they've started their process to ratify. I'm going to, I'm recommending support of that agreement by the selectmen, and it'll be on your next agenda as a consent item.
Under Town Manager's Report, we can, any other questions for Andrew, or, I know we don't have any other reports here listed, but it's usually when I think we can ask questions.
So, I had a question that was sparked by a conversation before about Bingham Way, and the conversation about how two, in two weeks, we'll be celebrating the year anniversary of that power outage, which prompted us, I think, to be proactive as a town where we approve money for generators at several sites. What's the status of that?
We've not made any progress in that regard. So the fund, it hasn't been spent yet, I haven't stopped, as I understood, there to be some work between the Housing Authority and Steve Foster, and given the focus we've been on the facility, I haven't done anything.
Maybe those whisper generators can be...
But we, as a town, approved it at town meeting, so is it, is it a holdup on...
Those CPC funds, right?
But we approved it, we approved the expenditure of those CPC funds at town meeting, so there's no obstacle from the towns.
No obstacles.
So...
Just hasn't gone done.
It's just the Housing Authority hasn't done it?
Well, you know, in partnership with us, yes, so this should not be, it's just focusing on other things, we fiscal year began July 1st, it's not unusual that we wouldn't have completed a CPC project three or four, five months ago.
But it's not, it isn't our project, it's their project, correct?
I think we approved that funding under, I'm not sure, did it list it on the housing card?
So it's fully...
I've always fully expected that that was going to be a joint effort between, because we had gotten a contract price, we supported the Housing Authority by going off, that we share a contract vendor for electricity, and we had, Steve Foster had worked with the Executive Director over there to get pricing, to make sure that the unit was the right unit. So I did expect that we would work with them to get it done, and it may be something that can be done on an existing contract. So I'll close, I'll ask Steve Foster to touch base with Kathy Hugue, she may say, no, it's on them, and they're focused on this right now, but we'll be moving to it, but I'll get an update.
Because I left it, I figure it wasn't, the ball wasn't in our court, you know, we approved the money and released it, but I guess if it, if it's, I guess if it's part of the ball, if the ball is in our court or part of our court, I guess I would, I'd be an advocate for moving as quickly as possible to get those generators in.
The funding went to the Housing Authority, but I still think it's reasonable to expect that I'll get an update from Steve Foster, because he was involved with Kathy Hugue originally, to sort of look at the additional, you know, the facilities that could take those generators and help with the price. We offered that assistance to expedite the process, so I need to just make sure from Steve that he didn't further commit, that he would be doing procurement side of things. That's what I need done as a end. If he did, we'll get him working on it.
Could I ask that that be placed on the agenda to just give an update on that?
Yeah, sure, next meeting.
Just because that, I think that we made a big deal about it last year, there was such a concern...
Agreed.
Leading up to it, that's why we were proactive as a municipality and being, I think, accommodating, and so it would be unfortunate if we missed this next season.
I agree.
My, my question for Steve is...
Should have been done already.
I agree with it. Going to throw that out there, I mean, it should have been done, I mean...
My question for Steve is, did you agree to be part of the sort of install process, either by getting quotes or coordinating that or doing the procurement? If the answer is no, then I'll ask the Executive Director what the status of the project is and do you get information back. If there is yes, I'll say, Steve, okay, can we start to make sure we take steps, make sure it's in place so we don't have to, you know, have another event, and not have the, it's really around the common ones, or the ones that are being part, but I'll check on that. I just don't remember where we ended up with it.
Any other questions for Andrew before we go to comments? Any comments, Selectmen comments?
Good job.
Okay.
I mean, I just want to, like, I mean, you get peppered with questions, Mr. Manager, from every single direction about this, and I think that one of the reasons why our community hasn't just completely fallen apart is because of the faith that they have in, in Town Hall, and I think, I hope, in town staff and officials and making sure that we fight for the interests, I mean, obviously, there are multiple people around this table that are living the effects of what happened several weeks ago, and I just, I wanted to specifically say, you know, I appreciate your truly 24/7 attention to this, and I'm still trying to stump you, but not yet, we'll keep playing that game, but you've been very...
No, it's, listen, I, I've commented, and other people have commented, Bill, and it really is the trust that the community has with the people who work here, it's evident, I mean, in fact, we can have this dialogue, share information, take a few knocks in the head, but a few pats on the back as well, it's just sort of part of the process, and people, if that support for you folks and the staff here was not there, we would have this long line, alcohol, and down the, the street, and I think people trust that we're advocating for them, they should, because we are, but like, people do trust that, and it comes, you know, if they, if they didn't think you folks were asking the right questions, they, then we'd see that too, so, it's great, you know, it's, I wanted to go.
I think visibly, what people can see, and, and, you know, I've been in Andover and Lawrence, too, over the last, the army, the absolute army of workers, I mean, that have just taken over our area, to orchestrate that, I mean, through the help of Governor Baker and, and others, is just so impressive, and, and, you know, police and fire, everybody, I mean, you're, you're driving down the street, and you'll see Beverly Police Department, you know, on their patches, and it's just the army of people that have come down to help, and literally helped, they've left their homes from Indiana, I, I met, who was staying at the hotel I was staying at, someone who was from Texas in Louisiana, coming to help, and all I say is, thank you, thank you for coming, and that's, you know, just thank you for coming, and it's just amazing. It's hard to believe that we could have put this all together, meaning we, the government, and again, through the state, through everybody, it's just, it's phenomenal.
Yeah, there's a lot, there are, it's easy to criticize, and I think there's days that it's fair to criticize, meaning, you know, if someone caused the problem, and they're also involved in the solution, so it's an interesting thing, but, but I do[1751.04]